On this matter.
You summarize the findings.
I would be responsive to questions if there are any. It's pretty straightforward. Darwin, Ray, any questions or comments? Okay. Then we would, I would ask the council for a motion to approve the land use tax amendment as presented.
I would make a motion that we approve it as presented the public hearing.
One second.
I better make that one up.
It's a motion to approve the land use tax amendment as presented. So we're just amending that section of the development code. Is my understanding.
Industrial Park, South District.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Poked, motion carries. We then need to have an ordinance prepared for the amendment to take place. So I just, I think we can do that by consensus of the council to request our town manager to have the attorney drop an ordinance. Everyone in favor?
Everyone in favor.
Okay.
I'll get it done. We'll hopefully have it through your first June meeting.
Now that that's done, can I, can I ask a question? In regards to the urban growth boundary, is it getting closer?
It's getting closer, yeah. It must be getting closer because time is going by, but it's getting closer to something. The planning commission, I guess Mike, you were there.
I was there, but it's confusing to keep up the honesty.
There is some, there is some concern between the opponents of the Red Rock Urban Growth Boundary Amendment and the proponents being Red Rock as to what the appropriate process that we should be going through. And it gets, really gets kind of technical. It's, should we be doing what's called a legislative process? Or should we be following a quasi judicial process? And we are following a legislative process at this time. And, and that's the direction that Red Rock has suggested they think it should go. The opponents to the Red Rock project, a firm called Craig Law Center in Portland, are saying that no, it should be a quasi judicial process. And what is happening at this point is the, the county, the planning commissions closed the public hearing on the last, it was the seventeenth, I believe it was, last Tuesday. We could go today. And continued the meeting to June 21st for the purpose of deliberating on a decision. And that by that time, or hopefully before that time, Mr. Valverde and Mr. Bailey will provide the planning commissions with directions as to which process we should be following or, or not. And once we've gotten that legal advice from John and Jim, then that should be what the planning commissions need to make a decision on the 21st. From there then, the process would go to, notice would be published and it would then become a town council and a county commission decision to be made would be the next step. Probably, well, it couldn't be before July would be the earliest. Or maybe Darwin, you might have some idea. Could be July, might be early August.
Yeah. It'll certainly depend on the 21st of June. But my hopes is after having talked with Jeff Manterneck that we can get that going as quickly as possible. So within five days, the county is supposed to let the board commissioners know, I'm to let the board commissioners know the recommendation from the county's planning commission, which within five days I'll do that and then schedule a hearing within 30 days. So it will have to be published two consecutive weeks before the hearing. So you know, you're looking at at least middle of July at the earliest. Possibly around the 14th and 15th, somewhere around there, which would be out right there. Yeah, if we're gonna lose enough time, it'll all be.
It could happen that way.
Sound like, originally we were told from Red Rock that there wasn't any drop dead date. And he even said that during the meeting. But after the meeting Jeff said, I think he didn't, didn't realize how much time was gonna take. And so he was like, oh, if we could get it sooner than summer, that'd be better than later. It must have something to do with financing, was my guess.
Probably.
Well, sir. He didn't specify.
What is, what, when decisions are made at the local level, those may not be final decisions. Depending on the level of interest in pursuing it further. So it's just.
The process.
A process.
Has been a lengthy one too. Yeah, they do it to get out of town.
So that's my update for the day.
Okay. Ready to move on?
Yes, I'm sorry.
No, that's impossible at all. You know, if you had any additional comments. Any other public comment at this time? We will go into communications and comments. We have an invitation from Lakeview Lake District that they will be having their ground making for the new long-term assisted living facilities this Thursday at 2:00 PM. So if you can attend that, would be nice. And then something that was on the table when we came in is the wood smoke work group meeting on, still set for June 7th.
It is.
Something that we should, DEQ will be here and we should be going to them. I don't know, where was Dan?
So you're all up to 10?
Yep, excellent. And for your second group update on a possible annexation to the town in the future.
Thank you, Mayor Wenzel. Jerry Chen, Lakeview, council members. So currently our projects have expanded and we are anticipating expanding into the Hunter's Hot Springs location for additional space for a recreational cannabis business. Currently that location is, is a hotel in Hot Springs. And we would like to bring either a retail operation to the location or if allowed by the OLLCC, also producer's license as well on the location. And also if possible, a processing for, for kitchen, for commercial kitchen.
Yep. Could you just back up? I, I kind of missed the location of where.
It's the Hunter's Hot Springs.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you.
We spoke with the OLLCC and they've given us a sort of a okay to move forward. So now it is next step, but we're hoping to annex the property to the town as well.
The whole, the whole property there?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Of course, the property is isolated from the town of Lakeview today. It's, you know, we are probably going to be annexing the, not probably, we will be annexing the uranium tailings property soon. You know, whenever that project's ready to be annexed, that, that piece of property. That still doesn't get as contiguous with the Hunter's Hot Springs property. So we'll have to figure out what the, you know, how to go about doing that. If you're interested in moving forward. Probably the best way to not give the town, I'm thinking out loud, the responsibility of having a bunch of streets and roads and all to have to maintain in the future. As we all know, we don't have any money in our street fund to speak of, would be to look at the possibility of annexing the highway from, I guess it'd be at the cemetery out to the Geiseru Lane, I guess would be the, or to the road into Hunter's Hot Springs or something like that. That would be one way of looking at creating a cherry stem, I guess they call it. That might, that might be a possibility. It looks like a way you might be able to get it, so.
Ray, I visited with you in regards to that and I was coming back from Bend over the weekend and I noticed Wickia area north of La Pine is far separated from La Pine, but the entrance to La Pine is way back on the other side and there's nothing in between. So I would imagine that's what they did perhaps.
I don't know. Yeah, I don't know either. I've not looked at a, a map of the jurisdictional boundaries, but it appears that, you know, they're both La Pine and there's, you know, a couple of miles from the railroad tracks to McDonald's. Dairy, dairy queen to McDonald's.
But that is something that perhaps could, could be allowed by the state to.
It probably, yeah, it would be, we'd be to look at, you know, I don't know, the road, if the highway makes any complications, that would be, you know, I did discuss this briefly with, with John Valverde and he thought that it had potential to look at doing that. I, as you guys know, I've talked about it before. Annexing, you know, a county road, then it becomes our road. You know, the highway is still gonna be ODOT's responsibility. So, so it's just, is it in the boundary of the town of Lakeview or not? So you will have to do some more work on it.
It's just kind of an easement type deal is obviously what it is, an easement annexation or.
I don't know what you call it exactly.
They're not gonna make us make it to the side of the roads probably.
It would still be there right away, so. How fast, how soon are you guys wanting to, is there a timeframe necessarily?
Not a specific timeframe, yes, as soon as we can get it going. This project also anticipates the retail location, which will provide 3% tax to the city as well. If that moves forward.
If the town imposes the tax.
Yes, well, I think actually currently with current laws, they will impose tax if the town decides to accept it.
Would that be recreational or medical facility out of store?
Recreational.
I did notice that the state released yesterday to legislative committee the receipts of taxes on marijuana up to this point. And I think for two or three months collections. It's been pretty phenomenal and they're expecting, I believe it was 43 million instead of the 2.3 that they originally forecasted. So a lot of difference in, in their collections.
I were talking about for the year?
For the year, it should be 43 million. That's their estimate. Now they had earlier estimated two to three million in tax collections, but it has bumped up already to 43 because of the current tax collections in the first couple of months or so. There's a lot of money to, to be had in far as, you know, the taxation. I'm still at a loss and perhaps Jerry can tell me what the production facilities will do for the communities? How is the state going to, to, you know, the communities that do participate in allowing those? How does that fit in, Jerry?
Well, for production size mostly, it's production of jobs, economic stimulus. For production, I don't believe there's actually an imposed tax currently. They will release another, I guess, temporary, well finalized ruling in, in June where they finalize all the rules and move forward with everything. But currently the only tax comes from retail, which is taken from the consumer at the time. Now with this particular project, it's so interesting because we have the go ahead from the OLLCC to have a hotel concurrent with a retail location. Which as from previous town council meetings, the, I think the hotel tax is now 1.8%.
Going up to, it will like, what, July 1st or when is it?
That's the state portion that's going up?
Yeah, you don't want to take the fact though, the raise, it's probably.
I think it's July 1st.
That's what I was thinking.
I think it's July 1st. Now, just before we start counting our, our cash, remember that the town of Lakeview doesn't, we don't actually receive any of the motel tax. It all goes to the county and the county gives it to the Chamber of Commerce, the Fairgrounds and North Lake EMS, I believe are the three recipients of the, of the motel tax in Lake County. So unless, unless the county were to propose an amendment to bring some of that into town for some reason or other, that's how that gets distributed. Not that that's bad, I just wanted to make sure we understood that we don't get any motel tax. But Jerry, I was gonna ask, do you have, I don't know if you've done any, you know, how much planning you've done or thought about, obviously some out at the Hunter's Hot Springs facility, but are we, you know, what are we looking at? What are you suggesting as far as employment and investment and, and so forth out there?
Well, originally when we first approached the town, it was to have a total of about 100,000 square feet, which provides approximately 200 jobs in all. With the current, current label status, they limit us to 40,000 square feet. And our current location, we can't provide the same. So with this expansion, we actually can get closer to that number, just about 60,000 square feet currently with both locations. And that can provide just, just about 150 jobs. We do anticipate getting, and hopefully pending permitting, getting started with everything sometime in June. We were told two weeks. And hopefully with, with the Hunter's Hospital location, we can further expand that as well. Our timeline for Hunter's however, will be a lot more delayed. We will be anticipating construction to begin sometime in October or November pending weather. So this will be a long-term project that will stretch on to next year.
I'm curious, are you looking at expanding the hotel facilities?
If need be. We have discussed that, but it's still under discussion right now to see what we can actually do. The OLLCC has not released the final rules just yet and we're waiting that. One of the things that they will address is, or hopefully they do address, is the concept of a hotel slash facility where you can actually see the product, use the product, have tours of the facility and just be able to be more educated about the product.
Geothermal, do you have any for the community's geothermal?
At this point, we will anticipate having a dual use. But yes, we are on city water at the location and there is geothermal on the location currently. But to extend the pipeline out would be very minimal. And I think we can, we can definitely work something out where the city has the potential to also contribute as well.
So you want me to have, I'm thinking what we need to do is maybe a little preliminary work and then maybe we need to have a work session about annexation.
I think so.
Have John brief us about the possibilities before we get too deep into it.
Before we make too many promises. Okay, when, when would we want to do that? Soon, our next meeting, have a work session for half hour or so before?
I'll try. John is, everybody else is out of town, so he'll be, he's supposed to be back next Monday. I don't know, that should, that'd give him a couple of weeks, so.
Right.
Potentially the 14th, maybe the 28th.
Right. Okay, thank you. Consent calendar, we have work session minutes and the regular session minutes from May 10th, 2016. The additions or collections from council. Okay, well, if that's the case, we'll accept the motion to approve.
Move it or we approve the consent calendar as presented?
The second?
Second.
And motion the second to approve the consent calendar as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Poked, motion carries. And then, senior councilor, manager updates. I really have nothing to report, but as I mentioned, I forgot to go to a meeting last. Ray?
Yeah, I do have a new contact person for the shooting range. Right now is Richard Cooper. And they meet first Wednesday at the Eagles Lodge at 6:00. And so I will be going over to that meeting. And then also talking with Jeff, our city works director. They have hired Clint Patsky, who's originally from here, as a new employee for the city works group.
Great. Darwin?
Lakeview Community Partnership met just on Sunday. I had a golf scramble tournament and also an auction and dinner, which was held at the golf course, which was excellent. There was some good auction items and also, it was probably about 30 people or so who attended. They were hoping for a larger turnout, but there were some other conflicts with other meetings and just other events that being held that day. There was, sounded to be four, or sorry, three different scramble groups for the golf tournament, which they all tied up apparently. I missed it, I wish I could have golfed, but the weather was, it looked so fun to be golfing in, especially with, you know, somebody who doesn't golf that much. But that was a really good event and, you know, encourage those who can to continue to support them in their efforts. They're gonna be working, you know, on some good ideas that they will continue to share with the, with the community. Other than that, we heard a little bit about Red Rock and how we're continuing to afford on that, so. That's about it.
Mike, one?
I, other than economic development, I would just say that I did visit with Jeff Manterneck when he was at the urban growth meeting that took place at the county courthouse last week. He seems to be very positive in regards with Red Rock's coming here and it would be to visit with him. And I heard him telling plans to someone else of the timeline. I guess waiting for the bureaucratic process to, to get out of the way so they can move forward. They're still very positive in moving forward. That's dragged on a long time.
Really?
You hopefully don't lose interest in, in it goes so long, but it all has to be done, so.
Okay, great. And Mr. Sims?
Well, Darwin and Mike and I have been attending mostly the same meetings at Red Rock. And then the process grinds on. Also last week, the regional solutions team, governor's regional solutions team met Thursday afternoon. They're, I guess the primary thing that they're doing that's, well, two things that they're working on in Lake County. One is the wood stove changeout program with SCOED. It's, they've made some minor modifications to the, to their, was it in the paper last week?
I was in Eugene on last week.
Anyway, they're, they're announcing, it was in last week's paper, it's going to be in this week's paper about allowing the most efficient certified wood stoves to be used now in Lakeview as one of the, one of the alternatives for changeout, getting rid of uncertified wood stove. So there's trying to make that program a little more user friendly and like you, get some more people to, to get into it.
And maybe some comments from people about their previous problems and.
Yeah, yeah, and so that's going on. And then also natural gas is the other project that that group is working on quite a bit. You know, there's a couple, several things going on there. One is there's this what they call Senate Bill 32 work group that's meeting. Ken Kessner is representing most of Eastern Oregon, I think, on that group at Lakeview, Lake County in particular. And they're trying to look at, they are looking at how to possibly modify PUC rules to make it easier for utility companies like Avista or Pacific Gas, is that what they call it? Any of those kinds of companies to come into communities like ours that are small and remote where the cost of providing services may be more expensive than it is if you're right on the main line in Clima Falls or Portland. So they're looking at modifications that may be made. And of course, one of the key pieces of whether or not we're able to ever get natural gas into Lakeview is going to be, will Red Rock, again, it goes back to our Red Rock discussion, will Red Rock build it that first three miles, you know, to their facility, so then it's less expensive. You don't have to build it all the way to the Ruby Pipeline, so. So several things happening on that front. You know, all good things, but all of them are kind of like Red Rock. You know, there's a bureaucratic process of kind of, it takes time to get to, you know, decisions made and get down there. So we'll probably have a year, I'm guessing from knowing how that all works out. But it, maybe we'll get there, so. I was going to attend the LCP thing on Sunday and I'd been out the ranch, I came back and just lay down, lay down and watched TV and went to sleep and woke up at 6:30. So by then it was too late, so. But anyway, I'd gotten wet and cold already, so didn't need to go to the golf course again like that. But LCP is going to be sponsoring the, what they're calling Beef and Brew on the 18th of June, which is the Saturday afternoon kind of following the health bear event at the hospital. So that's gonna move downtown and have several activities, you know, a number of things going on that day, so. Keep it in mind, you guys already approved some street closures, I think at your last meeting or maybe two meetings ago for that, so.
Same, that same weekend, they're also doing that ATV poker run, 18th, 19th.
The event that was supposed to happen this past weekend that was canceled at the Fairgrounds has also been moved to that date.
Oh, that's right.
The BMX church combination concert thing.
Good News in the Desert or something they call it.
Yeah, yeah, Good News in the Desert has also been moved to June 18th.
Another thing to remember is June 5th.
Pool party.
Is our pool party.
12, 3.
Opening the pool with three cupcakes.
And Saturday market will be there.
Swim team's gonna sell dry tips.
Oh, they are, okay.
Somebody else is selling, doing lunch. I think it's the Alder Society.
It's the Alder Society, the Catholic Church, I think is doing some lunch.
Fire Department's going to be doing the film, move that day to raise funds for fireworks, so.
Sunday.
When did the pass, pass it go on sale?
They're for sale now.
Oh, I know one other thing. I think the elves were approached about selling fireworks. Is there some kind of special permit they have given the town for that?
If they're a local business, they don't have to get anything from us. There's a, you know, there's some state fire marshal fire permits that they have to have. But, you know, the lady, what's her name that's been doing it? Tanya Minchinella that's been doing it down Safeway parking lot. We didn't require them to.
Well, apparently they're not doing it this year.
I see. I know she was kind of not wanting to do it last year and then did it last night.
Well, apparently the company has contacted the lodge, so they're gonna take it on.
Yeah, there's a, there's a permitting process through the fire marshal, I do know that.
I knew, I knew it was there, yeah.
If they were an out of town business, you know, itinerant business, we would require them to get a permit.
Any additional comments to those? We have some old business, we want a new business, a bargain and sale deed. This has to do with the real property between the town and the Happy Horse. Go ahead, Ray.
This is the other 10-foot piece that was in question that comes off Highway 140 going north that is between Dollar General's new, where they intend to locate and where the Happy Horse is currently. And it turns out that the Happy Horse uses it for access to the back of the property and a little bit of parking that they do back there. Dollar General determined that they didn't need it for their development after all. And so the way we cleared up this whole thing to get Dollar General to go ahead and build there is, as you remember at your last meeting, we deeded the north piece to, or without the stocks, who are going to deed it to Dollar General. And this piece will be deeded to Happy Horse and this will preserve their access for the future. So everybody, everybody comes out and winner?
A good agreement was made in the end.
The suit to quiet title, which was what led to this and we were waiting for it to be agreed to by the Happy Horse, has been approved and so that results in the deed being raised. at the time.
Motion?
Yes, please.
So move to transfer this piece of property that the town owns to Happy Horse, or this part of the sale deed.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to transfer the deed to Happy Horse as in bargain and sale deed. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? And any additional questions or comments?
I would just make a comment that I did see the oil, I'm sorry, the Lake of Oregon Cities site listing for the town manager, it looked very nice in there, you know, the salary might be a little different than other communities, but I think it's a good listing, but whoever put it in there did a good job.
I, I see that on our town file, so. Okay, we will talk for some more. Did you ever do anything about other states?
I did talk to the Lake of Oregon Cities in regards to other states around. The, it's, the Washington A W C net, or A W C dot net job listings for the state of Washington, they're free, and there are a couple of other listings. I believe that Nevada offers them for twenty to thirty dollars, and so we wanted to list those others. And I also noticed today that if you wanted to spend a hundred and fifty dollars, there's a site, and you may know Darwin Government, or G O B T jobs dot com, and it seemed to have every state, but I don't, I'm not, that's not my expertise in that arena, so I've not hired too many town managers.
It is, I don't know if it's posted yet, but it is at the Idaho site.
Okay.
That one was, you know, kind of like leagues, it was a, for non-members, there was a fee, but it's not, not huge.
Pretty minimal, okay.
And I didn't actually find a, a posting site on the Nevada League of Cities. You know, there, I didn't find a job posting there. They had a lot of stuff, I didn't find any job listings, and I did not look. I can, if you want me to, the Washington one, but I had not.
Yeah, the Washington is available, that's, the League of Oregon Cities is the one that mentioned that that's what they use themselves, so they even list their own League of Oregon City elements on the Washington, I guess because of the budget and everything, so. I'll look into that tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you, Mike.
You bet.
Okay, with that, we will close the meeting at four thirty-six.